Call the order, the regular common council meeting, Monday, October 17th, 7:00 PM. Roll call.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Frye?
Here.
Davis?
Yes.
Steen?
Steen.
Steen, sorry. Mark Wellnitz?
Yes.
Chris Wellnitz.
And Chris Wellnitz is excused again tonight. Excited with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting was noticed on Friday, October 14th. Agenda's posted at the post office, library, and city hall.
Council acceptance of agenda.
Motion to accept agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Personal appearances, anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on anything that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay, we'll move on to minutes from October 3rd.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Finance committee, Mark.
Motion to approve bills and payroll in the amount of $176,044.91.
Second.
Questions on the bills? Hearing none, roll call.
Mark Wellnitz?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve temporary Class B license for Edgerton Sterling North Book and Film Festival on November 4th.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The next two we move to move on to council for discussion, so I'm gonna, I guess, open it up for discussion here.
See what's in here. Okay.
See if we can get background on that, I guess.
The event packet amendment is, the request is to have the parking lot in near the depot available for tenting on Thursday. And there was also a conversation, I believe, in that email regarding, is the email in the packet, Cindy?
Yes, it's in the finance packet.
Okay. Regarding parking on, in the business park but on a lot, and we have, as staff is, really are not recommending we do that because of the, how wet it is. So really, the, I believe the requested amendment, according to the email, is for Thursday, additional tenting on Thursday of the parking lot.
So you would, would you repeat that, Ramona? You said you, the city had requested not on the parking lot, you said?
No, the, there's two requests in the email. I'm clarifying the last sentence, which is utilizing the old dog, dog park area in the industrial park is not on the table, really.
Oh.
The applicant is shaking his head yes, that is not tru, they're not, and they're not requesting that.
Okay.
So the request, the only modification to the packet that's being requested then is for an extension of that parking lot by the depot for Thursday.
Okay, so we already had that, right? We had already voted on that, but for Friday?
Friday, Saturday, Sunday, right.
So now we're extending it Thursday, Friday, Sa, okay.
Correct.
What kind of parking is typically there, like on a weekday? Is there, are there many vehicles?
No, not really. I mean, the folks I checked with were chiropractor office.
Okay.
I checked with Alice over at, John across the street. And they're the only ones, other than, check with, green light lines. And everything seems to be okay.
Would, okay, would that be closed then, from Thursday? Or would it part of, part of be able to be used once a tent's up, or not?
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know how big your tent is, no?
I thought I said it got on, I didn't let it pull.
Okay.
The quantity we're facing is, from Thursday, that instructor, we, manpower, building this wall around Center Street, and there's just a mess of stage, some system, lighting, weed, hanging up, decorating with candles, with tents, weed, and we're running out of manpower, although I'm not offended by manpower. But the labor force is just, is just scarce. But that's why we're asking for the extension there for today, on Thursday.
Okay.
Tenting get off, give us more time to get all this stuff and play before we finish. I mean, it still allows access, the drive coming into the condos, there's still parking in the back of the condos, and we just two spots right by the chiropractor.
Oh, okay, oh, that's okay. Sounds good to me.
So John's obviously been a little creative, so it's hard to, okay, Friday, Friday, forget, right? They were taking appointments on Friday, and the way I asked them Thursday, hey, do you mind if we like to do it? So we're good, so Friday, we'll get one. So they're going to, but people.
So that's the only item for, for that, right? I would make a motion to approve the amendment of the event packet to you, to block off the parking lot for utilization of setting up on Thursday.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
Motion passes. And the next one was brought on to council too. That's the memo from, in front of you here tonight.
The new memo that was laying here is what we should be referencing.
Correct. The only thing updated is the waste management costs. We didn't have one, the staff report was written, we do now, just $3,000 for the services they're going to provide. So that, hopefully you had a chance to review the memo, and again, we don't, we're doing our best to react and predict what's going to happen this weekend. So we're hopeful that if the event is very successful, that these costs will be covered by the event. But at this point, we think that it's essential that we have these safety measures in place to try to make the event run as smooth as we can.
So, what's your latest count, Scott?
Oh my God. All I can tell you is, I know.
Count is one thing, prediction is another, but...
We even go ahead and say five to six, 10% on high end, of all the purchases for the festival to be done online, five, six, probably five, six, half, maybe 10%. My email, considering the whole system, you could probably use the next year, and holy, it does. I literally have to touch every damn order. This website is terrible. I can't just click on it and it says, here's how many sold. And then there's the shirts, the tickets, the mugs, all that, and just, in order for me to extrapolate how much tax we have to pay at the end, well, this afternoon, I accumulated easily another 800-plus messages I have to go through. And someone else wrote messages, I'd love time to see that, I never did. I wanted to receive the 18 emails, and, anyway, that's it. We've always, we've come to a service back here to do this, because that's a full-time day. Again, I first respond to every damn email or message to the website. We're right now somewhere around 5,000-ish, maybe, and I bet you they might be closer to 6, but I have to get in there. We need to cut sales off, you're looking at these split. The question I want is charred sales, a full charred sale versus a cast sale, just from a perspective of the state, close to all the cast, but if you keep losing their emails, I have to respond to them.
Yep, so, I have been hearing or seeing or reading...
All kinds of numbers.
27,000-ish, but you think it's realistically, it's more like five or six?
Yeah.
Do you think it'll be 10,000 or less?
For total of that?
Yes.
No.
Oh, okay.
Can I add something? We truly believe online pre-sales are gonna be five to 10% of total sales. We also believe that probably only half of the people that come to this event are gonna buy the wristbands, the other are gonna do ala cards.
Okay.
And sightseeing. So, that's why, and I totally understand what is purchased and projections, but for us to ramp it up for what we think is gonna happen...
Yep.
We have to project. So, it's more than just a guess, to me, or a guess, it's, we've really put some thought into how many people are we gonna get ready for. So that's what we came up with that, and then we also do believe that it's only gonna be, I wish it was 90, but, no, 90%, people are gonna get the wristbands. I really, truly believe it's only gonna be about half the people are gonna get. A lot of folks...
Okay, so then, I guess, let me just revamp my question. What's your prediction?
We are preparing, we're preparing 500,000, east of 500,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we absolutely have to do these things.
Oh yeah.
Additional things.
You gotta prepare for the most common, if it doesn't, or whatever.
Yeah, well particularly if you're thinking about maybe doing this annually.
If we're allowed to.
Well, I guess we'll, we'll find out, but, because the, the worst thing you can do is have a terrible experience.
And not come back.
And then that, right.
We'll go up to a full-time line, we've got experience, and...
So, it, it looks like this will be an additional, about $7,300, that we would be anticipating we may, we probably should put into this event. There's no reason why, I don't think you could make money off, I mean, you've gotta be thinking this...
We're, it's a compliment, I think, some coffee, but, I mean, it was like, it was 6:15, it's like, oh my crap, we didn't have any breakfast or lunch, we didn't have any dinner, and we got this meeting tonight. That's how the day is going, all day, the phone, and the people coming in.
Do you think these are the only things that, that, I mean, I know, this too is just gonna be a guess.
Yeah, and I guess what we would like is, we, we did our best to try to give you the things we think we need to cover. There will be additional overtime costs for DPW, no question.
Right.
So, your motion this evening, if you decide to do these things, is that we will do our very best and not spend any more money than we have to, but you have to know that if something comes up, we have to do what we have to do, then, you know, we could call a special meeting, certainly if you wish, but not to exceed on this one's probably not the right move.
Right, right.
I, I'd like to say something here. We got, okay, we got two numbers here, basically, that relate to safety. And I can kind of understand that, now that dumpster rental, why is that being put on the city?
Well, you can talk to the organizers.
I guess, why are we, why do you think the city should pay that? If you're expecting the amount, a quantity of people that is, would be needed to justify this type of dumpster, then there ought to be payment from the organization to pay for the dumpster, if, if that's how you feel it's gonna go. And, I mean, why, why should the city take that gamble when you're the one predicting the, the outcome of the event?
One thing I might add is it isn't dumpsters, these are totes that are gonna be placed all over the place so that our staff can get the garbage out, not just have a dumpster parked somewhere, because you have to move the garbage from where the people are out. So this isn't just parking dumpsters at the DPW or something, so it's a little different kind of service that Waste Management's going to provide.
Right.
Oh, just so you know.
But again, it's a service that is needed for the, due to the left, I mean.
Yep.
But I think that they do indicate here that they expect to make money from this event to reimburse the city.
I understand that, and that's what I'm seeing, if, if, why, why should the risk be put on us, or if they don't make their money, then we're paying the bill for it? You know, if, if they're predicting it to the way they are, and it works, that's fine, they're covered, but if they don't, then the city pays, I, I don't, I don't agree with that.
Man, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's a good point. About, those bills that we're talking about here is a fraction of what this festival's gonna cost, quite honestly. I mean, Waste Management, for instance, I saw that bill Friday, I think that came through as recently. Total amount of bills, that, the expenses that are gonna take place with this festival, what I have seen of the city costs, they're minimal, to this long of expenses. I think we share this number that we have to reach in wristband sales, not, not just additional sales that other people are gonna be making. We have this number that we, that we need to reach, that everyone is, all expenses are gonna be paid, and that we might make a salary. Anything above that, expenses paid, Scott and his team makes, made a salary, all that money gets, all that money gets split up amongst the groups that have been designated, nonprofits. So, the, to talk about that there's gonna be profits from this, I, I want, I don't wanna talk about profits, there is no profit in this, except for individual businesses that increase their sales over the weekend. I understand your fear of, no more tickets are sold after the online sales today. I, I just, I, I don't, can I predict the future? No. I don't believe that to be true. I think it's hard to believe that the city is not gonna get paid for those bills.
And I guess my question, Mark, would be, are you only feeling that way about the dumpsters, or about the other two also?
I'm kind of feeling that with all of them, but, I mean, I, I understand the other two are safety issues, and it's our responsibility as a city to, to definitely be in tune with that, but it's, it's the dumpster thing that I'm, I'm completely against. I mean, if, if you're that confident as an organization that you're gonna get the attendance, you need to cover that cost, then you need to take the risk of that cost and not put it on the city.
Exactly, and, and I get the budget, the budget was made, went out of last year, most likely for this year, when the HP Festival wasn't of this magnitude. If this is going to work now, and hopefully in the future, HP Festival has to pay for the additional costs. It, it can't be a burden, we don't want this to be a burden on the citizens, we just don't. It can't be. That's what it's about, it's about the people, the organizations, it can't be a burden, as well, right?
Another issue I have with this, I mean, if we were to, any of us, we were to approve this, then, you know, next year, two after days comes on, hey, we need a fence for safety reasons, for here or there, or whatever, just because somebody else did it, now we should be able to get paid to do something similar. I mean, it kinda...
You'll always have that judgment.
Yes.
Right, I understand that.
I think this is different.
This is totally different.
At this point, you know, I, I think it's a different kind of event. If another event draws 25,000 people, yes, we'll be talking about the same kinds of things.
Yep.
So, I, I think your point's absolutely valid, Mark, but as, at least as a staff, these things have to happen, so if you can make the organizers pay for it, then of course that would be your prerogative, but we need to make sure this happens is where the staff is, because we think that it's, these are basic measures of safety that we need to put in place.
Right, and I understand that too, but...
I actually think the dumpsters are a safety measure too. You can't have garbage laying around, you, collecting of bees, and people getting stung, then we're talking about Randy's crew and all the EMS calls they're gonna get, and all that, I mean, it's just one thing after another.
Right, but there's enough, if they feel there's enough garbage produced and warrants these dumpsters, then there's obviously enough attendance to cover the cost of the dumpster, I guess is the way I'm seeing it.
Well, I guess I don't think we're gonna have a problem with them covering the cost. I mean, you know, I think what I'm hearing you're saying is, you want them to say they're...
They're taking care of it, not we're not taking that risk from the city.
And I would fully expect, I mean, this, I just came onto this from group about six weeks ago. Thanks. And, for this to be done, where you're not questioning, and I totally don't blame you for questioning that, I would be too, about the, I would fully, for this to plan out better next year, which is a 12-month planning process, which would really do this all better, is that when this is said and done, that the city of Edgerton gives us a list of what, what additional expenses did, did the city have to incur? You, you paid this, you paid this, you didn't pay this, you didn't pay this, we know what additional costs, what are the additional expenses that we may not have had in the first place? Like the additional garbage cans, the additional dumpsters, the overtime, the police force, the Tom, Thomas crew doing extra things. We need to know that cost, and we, tell me if I'm wrong, we fully expect this festival to add that city of Edgerton bill, if I may, to the expense list, and then, here's the rest of the money, I, you know, not you, that's for, you know, those organizations, but, and, and really, I, I, I don't know who's that guy, but, it's, it's of my opinion, that's not gonna be a problem coming from the full-time. He was much the skeptic when he came on at this time.
Thank you.
I've converted him though, I gotta tell you. Everybody, everybody at home, you know, should pick it up, because I'm against the ala card, I really am, 100% against it. He's very confused, consumer, but more importantly, it does not pay for services. And he's like, well, I, I think we should consider the ala card. And I said, Robert, do you want these bus shuttles to cost them? Do you like these, these, do you think they're gonna cost them? So, he goes, holy crap, who's gonna pay for those? So, not your ala card people, but it's gonna be ticket people. So that means we think that, because you cannot, the festival has got to pay for itself, and that one's gonna be around. The question, the festival's gonna take care of itself, to take care of all the people in the model, and then take care of the, on that, it's like a little break, really, like, I'm wired, really.
Do the downtown folks, and all the restaurants or food service, are they all aware and they're ready for this?
Are they ready?
Well, are they all aware?
Oh yeah, I, I would say, yeah. I had one person working in, and I've got two working in, and I'm all with them, because I still thank quite often, it was a bit of my, my, I go back to some of the organizations, 500 people go on, some organizations thousands go on. And, to the point, we've actually scrapped all the volunteer kind of stuff with cantiers, and we're bringing for, for some agents. Matter of fact, if we really can't shoot them, we lose some money behind it, because we know, and we're the process people, we need, I think, a, 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 a volunteer, a good staffer, you know, my experience with staffers. But I think they're, they're very, they're exciting, we'll say that, they're geeked out, and I vibe, and, let's do this stuff, let's enjoy it while you can, because, we take up, since I have this role, and we're employed in it, you know, we blow a lot of stuff.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like a motion to approve funding for the fencing and for the directional signs for the Harry Potter festival cost. Does that sound appropriate?
Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of second.
A motion to approve expenditure for fencing, directional signs, and the dumpsters, in hopes that the event costs, the event will generate enough money for, to be, for the city to be reimbursed.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I've just got one thing, in, in the past with all the other festivals that we've done, we've always picked up a lot of the cost. DPW, I don't think we've ever billed any, any festival for that. Half of the overtime, or some of, some of us pay all of it just because we want to, but, for the police. But this is bringing people into the city, and that's what these festivals are for, and that was one of the expenses that we've looked at in the past for, for doing these, so. I think, I think we're gonna get paid back, though, on these.
I do too.
It sounds like.
That's kind of my gut check too, Chris and Candy, that the positives of this thing is, to me, it's just unbelievable how fulfilled and, I can't even sleep myself, even think about it, it's just really cool in my mind, and everyone I've talked to, it's putting Edgerton from here up there, big time, you know? You know, it's just unbelievable what I've heard. I, I've been so excited lately, it's just, I get about two, three hours sleep myself thinking about, I just call some people from out of state, relatives out in New York, it's just unbelievable what I've seen. So, I, that's my picture too, so.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Wellnitz?
No.
Motion passes, four to one. Well, good luck.
Yeah, you bet.
Thanks, sir. As side note, I, over the weekend, I was notified by the documentary company for PPS, I did throw in both your name and number, but you're kind of expensive, so I see.
Your personal cellphone, your address, your, oh, and you threw in your social security number too.
I did have a guy call me that wanted to help, so he's gonna come and see you tomorrow.
Can I have 12 seconds? I just wanna say, I've been here about six to eight weeks, and, you know, I was waiting on tables at the depot, I've met many, many people, not just at the depot, but walking around town. This is my second meeting that I've come to here. I live about an hour south of Chicago, this is a great town, we have a great city here, great citizens. I'm, I'm just, I mean, I'm living here Monday through Friday now, maybe full-time soon, I'm on Monday.
You're afraid we're gonna kick you out?
Appreciate all of you.
You wanna get to know that guy right there, those two chiefs.
I appreciate all of you, I really do, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
If I'm in town, I'll give you a call, I'll give you a call, see what you need, Alfred. Oh, it ought to be interesting.
People to be open against, you know, give them a coffee.
I'm with you.
Yeah.
Killing me.
Yeah, they go down for the festival.
But that does, yeah.
Okay, that's about it for finance, wasn't it, Mark?
Um, yeah, I guess so.
Okay.
Sorry about that, I thought we were done already.
That's okay, thanks, no, that's fine. Anything from utility?
Utility met last Monday, there's nothing to bring forward.
Okay. RDA, we met tonight and approved one possible change on a grant for some painting to windows, other than that, about it from there. Approved the budget. Next item is, consider adoption of city of Edgerton Resolution 1616, final resolution declaring the city council's intentions for the Catlin Street project to exercise special assessment, police powers under Section 66.0703 Wisconsin statutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Motion passes. And the next item is to consider adoption of city of Edgerton Resolution 1716, final resolution declaring the city council's intentions for the Highland Avenue and Park Avenue sidewalk project to exercise special assessment, police powers under Section 66.0703 Wisconsin statutes. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is discuss and consider 2017 budget.
Brief summary?
Sure.
No. Motion to approve, yeah. The staff report's starting on page one of your budget packet, I'm just gonna hit a few of the highlights that are different from the prior meetings. Expenditure, we have, now have our revenue numbers in. Expenditure, we have, now have our revenue numbers in for our major state aids, which are down quite significantly really for us, $11,000. Expenditure restraint, there's been a new interpretation, this is a program that provides an incentive to municipalities who are able to control, arrest, however you want to describe it, operating expenses. There's been a new interpretation by the Department of Revenue as to how the program functions, which makes it more difficult to comply. So in the, these numbers that we need to comply with aren't out until the end of October, so we don't have them at this point. Staff has done what we can to estimate what the restrictions would be. So we are, at this point, hopeful that the budget, if you bring the budget within the levy limit, that it will also then be in line with expenditure restraint, and we would then have access to that more than $70,000 incentive that we receive. So it's an important thing for us. But we can't absolutely guarantee that until we get the state's calculations here, they, like I said, it won't be out till probably, because it's CPI, it won't be out till the end of the month. So I just offer that up as, as we meet the next time in November, the legal notice will have gone in the paper at that point. So depending upon what we do this evening, we should be in a position to put that legal notice in, but things may be changing in order to make sure we comply with expenditure restraint. The levy limit, we've talked about that in the past, the one piece of information that's changed there is that the current fire district budget is now here, and the fire district is not in compliance with the 2% plus CPI in this budget year. Their budget has some significant modifications, I'm told by the people who are involved in that, that it's bringing it kind of more in line with reality. And the, so the levy is not significantly different to the city or the taxpayers of Edgerton, so there isn't like there's a great increase in the levy, but there is a significant increase in the expenses in the budget, and those expenses are what you measure the levy limit for the fire district compliance. So the fire district has not proposed a budget that is in compliance with the 2% plus CPI. The impact for the city is that the fire district's budget will, levy will increase by $1,651, and that is less than the 1.51% that we are allowed to increase. So in the past, that's kind of been our, our request, is a fire district stay within, if we get 1%, the fire district gets 1%. So because of the way the numbers work out this year, that's what the impact would be, and that's what's in your current budget.
Ramona, I have to, just the way I think through things, when you say the fire district is not in compliance, I automatically think that's a negative thing, right? And it's not.
We cannot, what the implication is.
What I'm saying is, we are not going to be utilizing, correct, that 2% plus, CPI plus 2%.
Right, so the impact to the decision makers here is that if they are, if they meet that standard, then you can take that $1,600 and add it to your levy cap. But if they don't meet that standard, and maybe that's a better way to say it, then we can't do that. So that, that's the implication. In this budget year, the implication is not significant to your budget. If it were a $40,000 change, then we would be having concerns about, you need to be in compliance, so we can add that to our levy. Because otherwise, that has to subtract from our levy. So yeah, maybe that's a more clear way to say it, Candy, is that it's, you haven't met that standard, therefore, we don't have the ability to add that on.
Right. So this is a good thing.
Yeah, and like I said, the levy is not significantly different. It's really just the way they measure it for the levy limit that makes it difficult for, expenses have gone up, revenues have gone up, but they're measuring expenses only, so levy is what really impacts our levy limit.
Thanks.
Let's see, the library budget is now, we have the information from the library budget, and it is in your numbers, and it does include the capital that was on the sheet, it's been modified somewhat and pared down, so the, the updated schedule on page three lets you know what library capital improvements are in your budget. And the last item is, the personnel committee is still, had talked about earlier, management staff, kind of a pool of funds, so there's a number there that would, if you wish to do any of that, there's a number for which, that you can work with, but there's nothing in your budget currently to do that. So with that being said, you have a new list of capital, an updated list of the capital items. The few items that are highlighted are items that are, could be supported or would be supported by funds other than levy. The two items that are highlighted, the scoreboard and the fund umbrella, are currently in the budget as a levy item. Those two items could be funded by other resources, advertising fees at Racetrack Park, and developer fees. So that's a, I guess, gives you some ability to have some flexibility with those items. So then the summary on page four of the budget is that, at this point, we are $16,424 over the levy limit. So that's what you'd have to remove to get into compliance.
And that takes into account, or count the items on number, on page three?
Yes.
Okay, so the, so all those numbers on page three is in here?
Except for the items that are funded by something, like a utility. The Streetsweeper, Blaine Hemp Hill Storm Sewer, and North Main Storm Sewer are all funded by the Storm Sewer Utility.
Okay.
So those are projects we intend to do next year, but they're funded by another source.
Okay, so anything that is not shaded is up for reduction or looking at or, right?
Or even the, even the scoreboard and the fund umbrella could be funded elsewhere, and they would have $6,000 off your 16 right away.
Oh, I misunderstood then, I, okay.
So they're in the budget, supported by the levy.
But we could take them out to have, and have another funding.
Right.
Source.
Source.
Right, you could leave, they would still remain projects that would get done, they would be funded by another source.
Okay.
So that, in the effect, as the mayor indicated, would be a reduction in what you'd need to levy by that sum, $6,000.
Just, just over $10,000 left on.
Okay.
On three.
What does the number six mean that's next to the concrete breaker?
Oh, it's not on the bottom of the page. It's a shared, the concrete breaker is a shared expense with the utility, because they use it also. So it's, we have a conversation with the department heads regarding what portion belongs to each, so the utility has a portion of that.
So, so is this 11, 9, our portion, or is this total? Okay.
I only included the numbers that are levy-supported in here.
So I have a question about the generator for almost $35,000. I don't know, I don't know a lot about generators, but that just seems like a very high number to me.
And I think there's some flexibility in that, and the city engineer, as we reported earlier, is going to assist us with evaluating the needs and specifying the type of generator that would be needed. And thinking out of the box also about, we have a portable generator that runs a well, so, you know, I think we'll look at lots of alternatives, and I think that that generator is a place that you could consider at this point, because if by chance the generator is less expensive, okay, you've made some space there, if it is as expensive as what we currently have budgeted, and we don't have all the funds, say you've reduced the generator, we either use, we have available capital surplus funds that are, that every year, as you may recall, so we could continue to do the project, or you could wait another year and do it when we really find out where we are. So I think the generator does offer some flexibility in this year's budget, because that number is, it does seem high, and we're going on some pretty basic information at this point that, you know, I think we certainly haven't nailed down what the cost is going to be.
Tom, what are your thoughts? I mean, have you gotten, how did this number come up?
Number came up from a bid on a coal generator. Or the problem that he was having with getting a generator to build, he did, put it together to run everything as it is, because it was just easier to put it together that way, you said? And the 208, it comes into the building, it's not 220, it comes in, it's 208, it's not voltage coming in, so that caused a lot of problems. So you did a lot of work, and this is what it came up with. It's the only one that has come forward, and that's the most.
So you had asked others too?
Yes, generator and coal.
And you said our city.
Engineer.
Engineer. What were his initial thoughts?
Well, he is, he'll look at the whole thing. He has, they have someone on staff who, they work in a lot of municipalities and do a lot of municipal buildings, and many of them have backup generation. So I think they have a lot of experience, and so they will take the information that the chief has provided and do an evaluation, and they'll also, like I said, do things like think out of the box, because we have a very large portable generator, and so.
That's right.
Does that make sense? You know, does it make sense to wire the building for that portable generator and utilize it there if it isn't needed somewhere else?
So if we were to, what if we just took $10,000 off of that generator price? Right? Because we need another $10,000. That would take it down to $24,000, $25,000, and it sounds as though that's still a large amount of money for a generator, that we might not even use that much.
Right, we don't know.
Maybe. So we would have some buffer to keep there just in case, yet if something happens and it really was, we needed that $10,000 back, we would have it from surplus?
Yeah, the capital surplus in the general fund that you have now earmarked for capital projects, this would meet the standard by your policy. And you would make all those decisions. As we work through the process, and you would then have the opportunity to say, oh, it's 35G, that's a lot, yes or no to that, or it's 25. I mean, these decisions would be yours to make in the future, once we had better, a better evaluation.
How many more meetings do we have? We only got one or two meetings before this has to be settled, correct?
What has to happen, this, after this meeting, we have to be close enough to, to put the legal notice in the paper, and then you'll have two more meetings. You'll have your first meeting in November, and the public hearing, the second meeting in November. And you could make changes after the notice goes in the paper, but if you make significant changes, then you should re-notice.
So we, will we have the proper information needed from the city engineer for this generator by the next meeting?
No.
And so our next meeting is, after we meet next, then the notice goes in the paper?
Tonight, before the next meeting.
This meeting?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Right, so if you.
So, and all we need to do is to be comfortable thinking that we will be within our levy limit.
Right, that would be one goal. If you meet that, then that's, that's the worst-case scenario, because you've always maintained that you will comply with the levy limit, it's worth our while because of shared revenue to do that, so.
And if we go below, what happens to those additional funds? I'm always afraid that, you know, I've heard, you do not utilize those funds, you will lose them.
There is some carryover, the fire district plays into that, in this instance, the fire district budget is set, is that correct?
Yes.
At this point? Okay, so we know what that implication is. If the fire district was still working on their budget, and you were significantly below, then the fire district, if there is no, the fire district would take up the gap.
Difference, okay.
So that's one thing we always talk about, and then there is some carryover now allowed in future years, if you don't use all of your levy limit.
How mu, I mean, enough, we're.
Percentage, it's a small, reasonably small percentage.
Reasonably small, okay. Okay.
Do we have funds in an advertising, call it the cover of the scoreboards, or is that something that we have to run to get?
I think we have, because with that program is a, every two years they have to pay for a new, to have their sign up again. I think the prediction was that by the end of either this year or the end of next year, we would have, if people re-up, we'd have enough resources.
And when we set that policy up, it was okay to use it for the scoreboards, or was that just dedicated, I know it was dedicated for the nets to start with.
It's Racetrack Park.
And you can use the park, yes.
And we did talk about, the parks committee did talk about using those resources for this, and it seemed like a very good fit to them.
Okay.
Tom McLeod?
Yeah, I remember that, I was also, I was wondering also with the, there had been some discussion about approaching the school about picking up the cost for the scoreboard.
There was, and I've not heard the outcome of that conversation, someone in the audience volunteered to do that, so yes, we could certainly look into that also.
And that could be a potential saving of $2,500 right there.
Maybe if they picked up half or something, it would, you know, all of that would be helpful.
Yes, every dollar counts.
So are you suggesting that the scoreboard and the fund umbrella then would be coming out of the parks?
Not, not out of, right, well, there hasn't been any motion yet, but that was initially the mayor proposed, that is, use alternative funding for those two?
Alternative funding for those two. Would we have to indicate what alternate funding that was? I mean, do we have to be that specific?
Yeah, it's, we would know where it's eligible to come from ultimately.
Certainly, I think that we should look at an alternative source of funds for those.
I would too. Do you want to make them?
I motion, actually, why don't you, you have probably a better grasp of the.
I'm not so sure, no, you're gonna, the pressure is on, I'll do it, the pressure's on.
You can do it, Candy, you can do it.
I'll make a motion to take the dollars for the scoreboard and the fund umbrella out of this budget for the levy limit and apply it, or utilize other funds to pay for those two expenses.
I'll second that.
But you're getting the fund umbrella.
Okay.
Century.
Yes.
Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Wellmets?
Yes.
Hackenberry?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
So Ramona, would you tell, that brings it down?
10,284.
Pardon me?
10,284.
And then at that point, could we make a motion to, would be a motion to look at alternate options for the generator for the police stations? Would that be the appropriate way to make a motion?
Is the intention to reduce the generator by that 10,284 to bring us to the levy limit, is that what your motion intention would be?
That'd be my intention.
Okay, then yes.
Okay, motion to reduce generator budget by 1084 to bring within levy limit.
10,284, is that what it was? Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, 10,000, 10,284?
Yes.
10,284.
No, it's 10,284.
Maybe there's one on Craigslist we can find.
So that makes.
We mark tides, so whoever you want, you want to say. I just want to take all those cumulative numbers.
Okay, so those numbers then should bring us down to zero in the bottom, there's a little line there. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, roll call.
Frye?
Yes.
Wellmets?
Yes.
Hackenberry?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Well, I'm happy with where we're at.
Well, do we have to do something with the Streetsweeper? No, because you said those, that is.
Stormwater.
Stormwater.
Oh, it already is.
Yes, that would.
We don't have to motion for that.
It's not included in here.
Okay, thank you.
To the degree, I think.
Okay. I, I feel like you just, either we're getting so much better at this, thank you to the staff, or I don't know what, but we're not spending the hours and hours that we used to.
We're not in bad shape with Milton.
We gained some space with, with waste collection last year, significant space, and that, that operating room makes it possible to do what you, you know, what's happening right now. And the 10-year capital plan is also of great assistance, because we kind of predict out where we're going, when we're borrowing, what projects we're doing, so I think it takes out some of that guesswork also.
Well, I would agree, but I would also say between you and Cindy, I think you guys really do help it, help us through this process and make it easier, so thank you for that.
Thank you, everyone. Everybody done discussing budget? Okay with that? Mayor, all the persons, the staff reports. Like to extend our sympathies to the Ken Williams family, superintendent, school for many years. He, he was there when I was there, I don't know if any of you youngsters ever went up there.
One of his kids too.
So did I. And then, one of our members on the fire department, Mike Collins, his wife died in an accident, like to extend our sympathies to Mike, and also like to thank, Jamesville and Milton Fire Department for covering the station while the services were being held for Sonia, so thank them, and, and the members for getting together and going down and doing their respects.